So we haven't started the meeting yet. We ready to start? Go live?
Let's do it.
Okay, here we go. We're going live. Okay, we are live.
Okay. Welcome to the special meeting of the Capitola City Council. In accordance with the California Governor's Executive Order N 2920, this meeting is not physically open to the public. Council and staff are meeting via Zoom, and there are several ways for the public to watch and participate. Information on how to join the meeting using Zoom or a landline mobile phone, along with how to submit public comment during the meeting tonight, is available on our website, cityofcapitola.org, and on the published meeting agenda. The public can also livestream the meeting on our website. As always, this meeting is Cablecast Live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8, and is being recorded to be rebroadcast on the following Wednesday at 8:00 a.m. and on Saturday, following the first rebroadcast at 1:00 p.m. on Charter Channel 71 and Comcast Channel 25. And our technician this evening is Alice. Thank you, Mayor Brooks.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on with our special meeting tonight with item one. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Bertrand.
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Story is absent. Mayor Brooks?
Here. Okay, if you can please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag
United States of America, and to those republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now moving on to item two, additional materials. Do we have any additional materials this evening?
Yes, Mayor Brooks, there were two emails sent in regarding item 7A.
Great, thank you so much. Now moving on to item three, additions and deletions to the agenda. Is that what you need this evening?
There's definitely no changes to the agenda this evening.
Thank you. And on to item four for public comments. This is an opportunity for the audience to send in any comments of items not on this evening's agenda. We'll start with the attendees. Do we have anyone with their hands raised?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see anybody with their hands raised for public comments. And I do not see any emails.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're gonna move now on to item five for staff and city council comments. I'll begin with staff.
I don't think we have any announcements this evening.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any from council? And now we're gonna go ahead and move on to item six, our consent calendar. This item is taken with one, a motion and a second. And I have a motion to approve our consent item.
I can motion.
We have a motion to approve our consent, item A. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
You have a first and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Brooks.
Aye. Are that items listed unanimously now? Moving on to our item this evening, item 7A. This is a presentation of the proposed 2021-22 fiscal year budget for the City of Capitola General Fund and the Capitola Successor Agency. I'll go ahead and turn this over to staff for their presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Brooks. So this evening, we have a presentation for you tonight. We're following up on a number of items that you asked about at our first budget hearing. This is our second budget hearing. And then Jim and I will be sort of tag teaming our way through those presentations. And then Public Works Director Jess Burke will be sharing with us some ideas for the CIP for next year. So with that, Jim, do you want to share your screen, kick this off?
Thank you, Jimmy. Give me one moment here. Can everybody see that okay?
Looks good.
All right, so I'm gonna start with a quick summary. So as you recall, our proposed general fund budget is structurally balanced, and we are estimating to end fiscal year 21-22 with 1.4 million in the general fund. In addition, we have $600,000 that is still set aside as our COVID reserve that is also in the general fund. So between the two, we have about $2 million, which gives us the potential to utilize some of that fund balance during this upcoming fiscal year. As a reminder, we are utilizing Measure Up to balance in the future years. So not only are we showing a structurally balanced proposed budget, but also the five-year forecast is structurally balanced over that entire time. And this time around, I've added in the American Rescue Plan funding of $1.8 million, and that is programmed towards the WARC project. Excuse me. So this is, I believe you saw this last time, it's showing Measure Up going to operation. It has all the percentages, I'm sorry, for our revenues and what our assumptions are to build our revenue assumptions and those projected numbers. It shows beginning in next fiscal year, $400,000 of Measure Up revenue going towards operations, leaving a balance of just over $579,000 that could be programmed to operations, CIPs, council goals, whatever the council's direction is on there. And then that slowly builds up as far as the Measure Up going to operations from 400 to 750 over the five-year forecast, which reduces the balance going, remaining for operations or the other programs from 579 down to 309. Again, the net impact, it shows on the bottom there that we are basically zeroed out. We're structurally balanced for this year as well as the five forecasted years. The only difference, this is, I showed this summary at the last meeting. The only difference from our last meeting is you'll see an increase in intergovernmental revenues on the revenue side in the proposed fiscal year 21-22 and planned 22-23. So those are each going up by roughly $900,000 in each year. On the expenditure side, they increased equal amount, $900,000 into other financing uses, and that's showing the money that once it comes in as revenue going out into the WARC project. The impact in budgetary fund balances remain the same as last time, as well as we still have the $600,000 that's designated. So we have the, as COVID, so the $600,000 there, and then just under 1.4 million or just general fund balance.
And the intergovernmental revenue change, Jim, that's the American Rescue Plan federal funding coming into our budget this year and next, correct?
Correct, correct. So the areas that we're gonna be looking for feedback this evening are on funding for frozen and vacant positions, early childhood and youth program funding, the general fund balance, as well as capital improvement program funding. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to City Manager Jamie Goldstein.
All right, so I'm gonna bounce through these first ones pretty quickly because I think, I think we're honing in on potential directions so we can mostly focus on the CIP stuff this evening, which I think is gonna be the most interesting part of the conversation. So as a reminder, we have seven and a quarter positions that have been vacant and frozen through the pandemic, which results in savings around $600,000. As you can see, we're balanced as we are, and we're not balanced if we have $600,000 of additional costs. So we're not proposing to fill all those positions at this time. And we did talk about $100,000 to really just sort of stabilize some of the staffing deficiencies that we have. We talked about that at the last budget hearing. We talked about a number of different ways in which that could be funded over the next couple of years. We'll get to that here. Let's go to the next slide. Those different ideas were, staff had suggested potentially using fund balance. Councilmember Story suggested that we could reorganize the expenditures by potentially reducing some contributions into the ISFs, the Internal Service Funds. There was another idea from Councilmember Peterson about using the COVID stabilization account. And then alternatively, at the bottom there, you see the idea of using some of the fund balance. This was reviewed by the Finance Advisory Committee, was it night before last? And they actually ended up recommending using $100,000 this year from the equipment fund to fund this, because there is a fund balance there. Now, the equipment fund, the way we fund it is actually, we have a target funding level for every, any individual year. And what we do is we look at all of the pieces of equipment we have, and that's like all the cars, the trucks, the street sweeper, loaders, everything. And everything has a depreciation schedule. So what I mean by that is imagine we bought a $30,000 truck, and we think it's gonna last us five years. That means that each year, we think we need to be saving $6,000 a year for its replacement. So that's kind of how we get to the equipment fund contribution. We do have a balance in there right now, so we could do this. I don't think in the long term, it really will probably end up putting the money back. And that was what the FACS recommendation was. And they also recommended at this point, just holding on to the COVID stabilization account and then reevaluating that at mid-year. And I'll be honest with you that overall, the difference between the COVID fund and the general fund and rejiggering ISFs is, it's mostly semantics. At the end of the day, it's still the expenditure. We've kind of siloed off this money, but at the end of the day, council retains full discretion, whatever pot it's in, to spend it. So I don't think this is a real sort of make or break thing. So right now, I think staff is just recommending what the Finance Advisory Committee said, which is to use the ISF this first year. So then, the next one was the ECYP funding. That's the little carve-out out of the TOT, the hotel tax, that is voter restricted to go towards early childhood and youth programming in educational purposes. We had suggested at the last meeting, $30,000 be put into a grant program for nonprofits to apply for, specific to ECYP uses. Mayor Brooks suggested making that $33,000. And then in addition, we were talking about some other, oh, and then in addition, taking the remaining $30,000, programming it into the Recreation Division for ECYP-type activities. There was also related to this, a conversation at the last meeting about using maybe $50,000 out of the ECYP fund for a van that would support the recreation programs so that we can move kids around now that we have year-round programs for youth. And Mayor Brooks suggested that we could use $50,000 from the American Rescue Plan for the, for that purpose. And so the Finance Advisory Committee supported basically every of the discussions that took place at the last council meeting. And so that was increasing the ECYP grant funding to 33K, programming the 30K into the Rec Division, and then utilizing 50K as American Rescue Plan funding for a small passenger van for the after-school program and other youth programming. So then we also talked about the fund balance. So you recall that Jim mentioned that we had about $1.4 million of projected fund balance. And we talked about a goal of $750,000 as a probable good place to be. That's higher than we've used in the past as a target, but I think everyone just, we want to be in a place where we're confident that where we're going is in a good direction coming out of the pandemic. So the thought was to use, take that balance down to about $750,000, which would leave 650 available. And the Finance Advisory Committee looked at that between kind of balancing debt reduction versus near-term projects. Historically, when we've had decent-sized allocations out of our fund balance, we've tried to do both of those things at the same time. The Finance Advisory Committee looked at the different types of debt that we hold. We have two different debts held by, one by the state of California, what's called the infrastructure. the Infrastructure Bank, and another one with Santa Cruz County Bank. Both of those have extremely favorable interest rates, and so they didn't suggest repaying those. And then we also have our PERS UAL, which is a really a, that's our unfunded liability for our pensions. And that's, that's a tough nut to crack because it's such a large number. We do have a million dollars set aside to help offset that. But at the end of the day, we'll get to the next slide, Jim. The Finance Advisory Committee essentially said, they think that the city is in an okay place from a debt standpoint, and they suggested taking the 650 and allocating it towards CIP projects, the council goals. They broke it and said 400 for CIP and 250 towards council goals that could include CIP. So I really interpret this to mean is, is 650 towards council projects. And we have some recommendations about how to do that coming up here in the next couple of slides. So one of the last things that we're following up on from the last meeting was a question by Councilmember Story about how much additional Measure F funding could be made available because, for the Worf. And that's looking at the future Measure F revenue. So earlier, Jim showed us what the next five or six years of Measure F was going to look like as we started to draw more of that in for operations and less was available for the Worf. And so we'll take a look at what that means on the next slide. But here, I just want to remind everybody what kind of the funding for the Worf looks like right now. So recall that we think it's a probably a five to seven and a half million dollar project. To a large degree, we do control the project costs in the sense that, that there's, the project can be done in pieces and we don't have to do every single component of the Worf at the same time. So we put in about 1.2 million dollars of Measure F into the Worf. We have a balance down of about $900,000 remaining after spending design costs, permitting costs. We have the 1.9 million dollars from the state through Mark Stone's office that he helped us get. The American Rescue Plan, that we're recommending putting that into the Worf project. And then Measure F funding this next year, which we'll be making a decision on that tonight, we're suggesting should be programmed entirely into the Worf, which brings us to funding just shy of $6 million. That puts us in the ballpark, kind of in the middle of the project cost estimate. Now we can jump to the next one, Jim. So if we look at the future, looking at the future fiscal years, there's another 2.8 dollars, 2.8 million dollars of Measure F funding between this budget we're in now and then the end of Measure F. But obviously, we don't have that now. And so we would either save up and then do the project in seven years, which doesn't make any sense because the Worf will be falling apart in seven years and project costs will be going up the whole time. So we don't want to do that. So and other options would be to do some sort of short-term financing, which isn't easy. You know, there aren't a lot of short-term financing options for a $2 million debt issuance for five years that just isn't really a product that's out there. On top of that, when you get into these small debt issuances, there's often a lot of cost to issue it. You know, in other words, you're paying 20, 30, $40,000 to get the money. So if we wanted to do that, I think we would want to look into internal borrowing. And what I mean by that is, is maybe like utilizing the PERS trust to pay some of the PERS costs one year and then utilize Measure F to pay that. And then using that savings into the Worf and then using Measure F to pay back PERS trust over time. So we could do that if we want to. I think that decision honestly can be punted until, until we get to the time to really permit, approve the Worf. And at that point, we're going to have a real good idea of what the costs are. And if we say, boy, we would really like to get another 500K into the project, we can present options to do that. So it's not a decision you have to make with this budget. There also is another 1.4 million dollars that Congressman Panetta has submitted for consideration in the federal budget. We won't know whether that gets funded until probably later this summer, maybe fall when the federal budget's approved. But that would obviously bring us up to the high, high range in terms of our overall project cost estimate if we're, if we are able and successful to get that funding. All right, so that takes us to, I think, the meat and potatoes of tonight's agenda, which is the capital improvement program. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Director Jess Burke. If you want to lead us through this part of the presentation, please.
Evening, Councilman Mayor. Happy to be with you tonight. Review the capital improvement program. We'll start with the, the good news. These are the projects that we completed within the last fiscal year. We had the Capitola Avenue sidewalk and retaining wall, the Flume rehabilitation, the Jetty rehabilitation project.
And I got to jump in, Steve, you also have one other big project up on Worf Road that I think we just handed over the keys to somebody on too.
Yeah, today, I am happy to announce, this is the temporary occupancy, it doesn't show up on the camera, temporary occupancy to the library, which kind of signals we're at 99% complete on that project. The library can formally move in and we'll have the keys. So it doesn't show up here, but that's a big project to get off and taking a lot, a good portion of our time here. So anyway, these are the projects that are completed. And Jim, you want to move forward, please? Thank you. These are the projects that have been on the books and are not completed yet. And with their funding sources and existing fund balance, I'll just go through them really quick. First is the Claire's Worf traffic calming, which we want to get moving. We know it's important, especially with the library opening. Kaoch and I are working on that, trying to get together a workshop here in the next, sometime in June, that will allow us to move forward with that project. We're anticipating, it's about a $200,000 project. This will add pedestrian crossings at 46th and 42nd, and also make improvements to the intersection of Worf Road and Claire's. Right now, we have sufficient funding for that project. Next project is the 41st adaptive signal control. This is funded by primarily or completely by an airboard grant. We've been working on this for many years, trying to bring in the Caltrans intersections at the ramps. We remain unsuccessful in getting Caltrans cooperation, and we're continuing to do that. We do anticipate taking a project out to bid on this for the city traffic signal. So that's from Claire Street South to Jade Bromer intersection. And then if we can bring in the Caltrans intersections at a later date, we will. That project is also currently funded. The Monterey Avenue pedestrian pathway, that's the pathway from the upper parking lot behind city wall, city hall up to Monterey Avenue. It's a project that I know we talked about in agreement several council meetings ago that we entered into with the RTC. But at this point, we are continuing to kind of hold on it to see if we can tie in with the county's environmental work and also what the scope of our project's going to look like. There's a bottom moving pieces, if the county moves forward with a project to build a trail along it, it may or may not tie into what we built, so we want to make sure what we make works. If they do move forward that, it's possible we could save, you know, 30 to 50,000 by depending, meaning on their environmental work. So we know it's important. I think we're going to try and look and see if there's a way we can build a sidewalk up there without going into the railroad property, which would make us independent of that. That, we're not sure if that's, how feasible that is, and it may involve quite a bit of tree removal, but we'll, we'll be looking at and continuing to work on that. Next is the Riston Park. As you all know, we have applied for a grant from State Parks to complete the funding on that project. We anticipate getting that grant, response to our grant application by the end of the summer, at which time we can make some further decisions on how best to proceed. If we get the grant funding, we're kind of full speed ahead to wrap up the plans and go out to bid. If we are unsuccessful, then we'll be back talking about it kind of on the short haul here. Next is the Roundabout at Cap Ave and Day Avenue. Been on the books for a while. We did some preliminary design work and realized we had to do an undergrounding project. We had the PG&E funds to do an undergrounding project, and that's been our primary objective over the last three years at least, to get the utility undergrounding project completed. Again, that's a PG&E project that we kind of, we A, pay a little bit into, it's about a $2 million project. And it's on their, it's on their scheduling, which is difficult to tell, as we learned from the library project. So right now, we know they are talking to contractors and getting final prices. There's still some, maybe some right-of-way acquisitions and other design issues that need to be resolved. I think PG&E has an earmark to go out for construction this winter. So we'll keep you posted on that project. Right now, because I think we are responsible for right-of-way, any right-of-way acquisition that's needed and the installation of streetlights. We anticipate that to be somewhere around $100,000. So we're about $97,000 short of our portion of that project at this point. And later on, we will be addressing that issue, that funding shortage. And the last project here is the pavement management program. Last year, we allocated $443,000 to it. We've been working on it, trying to develop the correct program to move forward, a combination of addressing the worst streets and also trying to save the streets that aren't failed. At this point, we're recommending it, we combine it with the, this year's allocation of funding, and we'll address that in a minute, and create an even larger project that allows us to get even better pricing. And the final project here is the Worf improvements. Jamie kind of went through this funding already, depending on what project we have. With the existing funding, we have about 900, just short of $900,000 in existing funding that we're, we carrying forward on this. Thank you, Jim. So looking at the appropriations we're recommending for this year, Jamie's talked about these and some of them we've, we've talked about previously, but I'll just go through them. For the pavement management program, as I just mentioned, we're recommending the RTC Measure D and the State SB1 funds, about $443,000. All be earmarked for pavement management. That'll give us $800,000 of just Measure D and SB1 money. I think on the last council meeting, you gave us authority to move forward with an emergency power project at City Hall. It's a $300,000 grant and a $90,000 allocation from the facility fund to complete the funding for that project. And then, once again, the Worf project, we're recommending that the this year's or next year's, the 2022 Measure F funds go to the Worf project. The street grant from the Coastal Conservancy of 1.9 million dollars go to the Worf. That's new money's coming, come in this year, so it's in this year's budget. And then the Recovery Act money, 1.8 million dollars of the Recovery Act money going into the Worf. That'll give us a total funding of new funding coming in of 400, $4,660,000. And on next week's agenda, town, city council agenda is the final notice of completion for the Flume and Jetty project. It looks like we will have a fund balance of $117,000 in that, from that project, from what was budgeted. And at this time, since it's all Measure F and Measure F each project, we're recommending that that fund balance also be transferred to the Worf project. So again, you can see we have 5.6 million in projects five to seven nine dollars. So, I don't know if I'm, I'll take, Jamie, do you want to take this or you want me to talk about it?
I can take it.
Okay.
So, so as a reminder, we, we think we, you know, based on the facts, recommendations and the conversation we had with the council at the first budget hearing, we have about $650,000 to allocate from fund balance. And this is, this is a staff proposal on how to do it. Council has total discretion on how to change it or shift these funds around. But we wanted to give some sort of proposal and suggestion on how best to allocate it. So number one is, is we're suggesting $100,000 to the utility undergrounding project, which Steve shared with you, moving forward, and this is for the right-of-way and the lights, our portion, and then there's about $2 million worth of PG&E costs, which, which they will be paying. Another $150,000 into pavement management. I think that'll take the whole project balance a little bit north of a million dollars that we have available for pavement management, which is slurry ceiling, fixing roads that are really in disrepair. And we should be getting a presentation from Public Works about that coming up here in the next couple of meetings, about what streets we can do with that budget, once we know our budget. Staff is suggesting a potential new CIP project, which would be Park Avenue Traffic Calming. Whether this is called Park Avenue Traffic Calming or Park Avenue Bike Lane Enhancement, I'm not sure exactly, but it's really, there's not a lot of opportunity to do traffic calming in the sense of like speed bumps or something, since it isn't arterial. But we do think that there's a possibility to use maybe strategic bits of green paint, some separators between the bike lane and the road. There's obviously not a ton of width to work with, but there's been some projects that we've seen in the City of Santa Cruz crop up recently, which we think would be a good model. So we think $100,000 there, that we try to see what kind of project we can develop would be a good idea. We're also suggesting starting to put some money into the Bay Cap Ave Roundabout. Recognize that it's a million dollar project and the $200,000 is just a start. But do keep in mind that we have the COVID reserve that we can be talking about hopefully later this, this fiscal year, as well as potentially some federal funding for infrastructure projects. We don't know any details about that at all. I just do believe that there's going to be more federal support for cities than we've seen in the past coming up here in the next 18 months. So we think that potentially having that funding could help put us in a position to get more as we move forward. We're also suggesting maybe $25,000 to, to look at a design for Kennedy Drive sidewalk down there, sort of Lower Kennedy before it runs into Park. This was something I think Councilmember Bertrand suggested at the last meeting, just to let Cliffwood Heights residents walk down towards the intersection of Park and Kennedy McGregor there. We're also suggesting a relatively small allocation of funding into sort of a Monterey Park, New Brighton Middle School Joint School District Field Project. At this point, the school district has been paying for some preliminary design work. They haven't asked us to put anything into the project at this stage, but we do think that if we had some resources, we'd demonstrate sort of our good faith effort to kind of partner with them on this, and it could be potentially working on grants, but this is really just a bit of seed money to kind of kick this project off. We were also suggesting $65,000 for kind of other programs, which would include Community Grant Strategic Plan, which has been a long-running council goal. We really think that getting people who work in this field on a professional basis involved and get them really resources they need to help us get it done would be wise. The Monterey Park picnic benches for something Councilmember Bertrand, I think, mentioned during a goal-setting session. Seminarian hygiene products in all of our public restrooms is something Mayor Brooks mentioned. And then potentially $5,000 to enhance our, our sort of public outreach effort, maybe another newsletter that we could do and send to all residents. So that's, that would basically, this is, you know, frankly, a stalking horse. It's just a proposal, but it puts on paper sort of some of our ideas about how best to use the 60, $650,000 in fund balance. Next slide. So if we did that, your next question is going to be, where does that leave us on various projects? And so what it would mean is, is that the Claire's Worf Traffic Calming Project remains funded. We have funding that we think that would, would get that project out to bid. The 41st Avenue project, we expect to be able to bid with the funding we have. The Monterey and Park Pedestrian Pathway, the one we talked about recently that goes up at the RTC right-of-way, we didn't propose funding, mostly because there's just, there's so many different moving pieces right now with the rail trail, that we're thinking it may be best to just hold back a little bit at this stage. And if we're able to figure that out, we could suggest moving maybe some of the COVID reserve in mid-year into that, if, if potentially it's something we want to do. The other really important project, I think, to keep in your mind for the COVID reserve is the Riston Park. When we find out about the grant, if the grant comes in, we're good. We even get, I think, a refund out of that project. If it doesn't come in, I think if I were, if I were in your shoes, I would earmark maybe some of that COVID reserve to get the Riston Park project bid, bid and built. The Roundabout at Cap Fay would be, we'd still be looking for another seven or eight hundred thousand dollars for it. Utility undergrounding would be fully funded. We'd have a little bit north of a million dollars for pavement management. The Park Avenue Traffic Calming Project, we'd have a budget of $100,000 to see where they go, as well as the other two projects that I mentioned earlier. And if we took all the actions that we've recommended around the Worf, we would have $5.7 million budget for the Worf at this point pending, I think. No, I think that would, that would be fully budgeting, all the funds we've identified. So with that, our recommendations, essentially near the Finance Advisory Committee's recommendations for the first three bullets around the frozen positions, the ECP funding, the RA, the Recovery Act funding, splitting it between the Worf and then the recreation van. And then, again, following the Finance Advisory Committee and the council's recommendations, reducing the general fund balance to 750. And then we talked about all the CIP projects we would allocate it to. We have it all summarized on the next slide, putting the 65K to the council goals that I just went through. And then, the decision for this evening will be whether we want to continue to deliver And then, the decision for this evening will be, um, whether we want to continue the deliberations into another budget hearing, or if the council would be prepared to direct us to prepare the documents for final adoption, cancel the remaining hearings, and we would come back at a regular meeting with, uh, all the information that you'd need to, to, to adopt the budget. And with that, oh, so then, yeah, so if you want to see all the different CIP things, because I can imagine that went by pretty quickly, we put them all here in one place. So these would be the recommendations we would have about how to allocate the funding. And with that, I think we're available for questions, unless I'm missing something, Jim or Steve? All right, great, back to you, Mayor Brooks and council.
All right, there was a lot there. Do we have a final slide on, um, recommendations, so that it's the three facts and the, um, thank you. Okay, so questions from council, Councilmember Bertrand.
Yeah, in terms of the Roundabout, um, I think I've heard talks of the, uh, Air District, uh, wanting to give us money for that, sort of like they've given us money for the, um, signal sequencing.
That, that's correct, I don't know the status of their funding, Steve, do you have any updates on the Roundabout funding?
So, the Air Board is interested in funding, uh, roundabouts, um, I think we need to be in a position when we're ready to go to construction on it before we apply and time it out a little better. They are very short windows when, uh, to spend their funding, and they also like to kind of be the, uh, final ten percent of funding or something like that. So, at this point, I do not recommend that we apply at this point, just because we could still be a year, at least a year to two years away before that project moves forward, but that is something we'll keep an eye on.
Is there any funding possibility from RTC, being able to help in traffic movement?
Right now, there, there's no allocations that are grant programs that I'm aware of that, um, but I, I can check and keep it, and monitoring that, but right now, I'm not aware of any grant programs that they have that we could apply for.
Yeah, maybe some of their staff, okay, thank you. It's just that we're so far, we're not too far along on the, um, Roundabout.
Exactly, we have a long way to go still.
Yeah, thank you.
We do have a long way to go, but I, I would, you know, we do have the COVID reserve, especially, and if we're able to free up, um, the funding from the Riston project, that's another chunk of money. I'm still hopeful that we're going to see some of our contingency returned on the library, which is another chunk. Uh, and then if we do get to a more normal economy, we could potentially talk about additional fund balance. So, it's not as, it's not as hopeless as it seems, I, there's a fair number of pots of money that could become available in the next six to eighteen months, I think.
Mayor, if I may, just a quick follow-up, you're reminding me about the potential return from the library fund, um, what, what kind of, um, amounts are we thinking at this point?
I would put it in the, I'll get quoted on this, I think it's going to be in the four to five hundred thousand dollar range.
Okay, and is there a timeline on that, um?
So, there's still punchless items, and there's still some extra costs that need to be, um, put into the project. Um, we anticipate issuing a notice of completion, which will identify all those final costs. Probably going to take us the better part of the summer to, to wrap that up, so it'll probably be, uh, July, or August before we get to that point.
And would there be any clawbacks, you know, for other facilities, like the Santa Cruz Library that's still in planning?
N, n, no, so we would be, we would be returning general fund money the city put in to the project.
That's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, in addition, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, the money you're talking about is money that we would get out of the contingencies. In addition, uh, you will call that, we've had a bit of a disagreement with the architects regarding, uh, the delay costs that were associated with the utility lines.
Right, right.
That's moving forward on a separate process, and the city has estimated that our delay costs, uh, that we incurred were between nine hundred and a million dollars.
So we control the contingency at this point?
The, the first pot of money Steve referenced.
Yes, okay, I just wanted to make sure, thank you.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, um, I agree with the staff recommendations, I just have a, a quick question. Um, there was mention of the Riston Park project, and I know that we received, or, excuse me, one of the issues that we've had at Riston Park previously is the invasive plant species, and we received an email this morning about, um, potentially investing some of our funding into mitigation of those, um, invasive plant species, not only at Riston, but along SoCal Creek. So I'm just wondering that when we talk about, um, the funding that we may be using towards Riston property, um, are we considering using any of that for that kind of plants, uh, invasive plants removal, or if not, is, is that something that we may be considering down the line as we continue to look into other ways to support, um, that property and the SoCal Creek, uh, in general?
So the Riston Park project does not have any riparian restoration plans to it at this point, so there's no funding included in the project cost we keep showing you for that project for removal of invasive species. Um, we did have a report prepared, um, using our tree fund to identify, uh, the amount of invasive species over there and give us some costs, and I think the email we received today, um, asked for money to remove the ivy. Um, I'm, I'm kind of hesitant to move forward with that recommendation at this point, just because to remove the ivy involves, um, quite a bit of work, um, probably fifty thousand dollars, but then you can't just remove it and go away, because it'll grow back very quickly. We need to have a detailed plan and put plants in there that will keep the ivy okay. Overall, the estimate for the entire riparian restoration for the, right, um, Riston property is almost a half million dollars. So that's such a small part of it, and it would inquire quite a bit of permitting and, uh, other issues. So, I think it's, that's a, a council goal is to move forward with that project, we should start talking about it, make it a, you know, start banking some money or identify it for future funding, but at this point, I wouldn't recommend moving forward with just an ivy removal project and leaving it at that.
That makes sense, thank you. Um, otherwise, I think these are great recommendations, I'm especially excited about the, um, the Roundabout, that's something that we've been talking about for a long time, as Councilmember of Bertrand mentioned, um, still got a long way to go on that. And I think Park Avenue traffic calming slash bike lane improvements, whatever we're going to be referring to it as, um, are also really promising, um, projects that we've been hearing about from, from our residents for quite a while, so, um, if this is the, would it be appropriate at this time for me to make, oh no, we need to go to, uh, public comment first, okay?
Yeah, public comment, um, so we have time for questions. Uh, Councilmember Kaiser, did you have some questions?
This may be more of a comment, um, but I guess it goes along the lines of, is, is there a way to sort of go over these in more of, um, a, a prioritizing list? Like, I would say, hey, put the sidewalk from the Pack Cove up to Monterey on the backburner if we may be able to get funding, um, versus, maybe then we could put more efforts into the sidewalk to Kennedy, things like that, is that necessary to do, or is that just something, um, that would happen systematically?
I would say if there's high priority projects, that would be great to, to be identified. Um, we try to work on all the projects and get them done, um, obviously some projects take a lot more work and we, uh, like the Worf project has taken a lot of time, the library projects over the last year. Um, but, and I know Claire's is the highest priority that we're probably working on at time closely called by, uh, pavement management, um, but if there's other projects that are less important, like you mentioned, the, the sidewalk up to, uh, Park Avenue, um, that would be good to announce.
Not that it's like less important, but I just feel like if there is the potential to get additional funding that wouldn't necessarily put us on the line for, I feel like that's something to explore more so than just getting the project done.
And we've identified the projects that we are, you know, waiting for funding decisions on, that we're probably not working on as, uh, as much as we're waiting for funding.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure the efforts are going the right direction. Thanks.
Well said, Councilmember Kaiser, thank you for bringing that up. Um, Councilmember Bertrand, do you have a question?
Um, I have a comment, if I may, um...
Councilmember Bertrand, with just that question, you'll have your chance for comment in a second, I just want to make sure we go out to public comment, or, public first, and then we'll bring it back for, for deliberation and comment. Um, so let's do that real quick and then we'll come back. Uh, do we have any other, uh, any public comments at this time?
Mayor Brooks, I do not see any attendees with their hands up, and, oh, let's see. I do actually have a, an email, uh, on this item.
Thank you.
I'm going to try it again, the, uh, the sharing of the screen and the reading, so, uh, give me a second and I will, uh, um, can you, um, Jim, can you unshare your screen? Thank you. Um, we'll give it another shot, um, here we go. Public comment, and you see that okay?
No.
You don't see this screen, no way, did I not share it all the way? Sorry.
No sharing, yeah.
I, I, how about now?
Yeah, that's coming on.
Okay, all right, so we are going to try the read aloud.
Oh, it's from Peter.
Roundabout is a bad idea that has not been vetted by the public.
Nope.
Sent from my iPhone.
Do we need to read it, or is that okay?
Uh, so for the public who's just listening and if...
Yeah, let me, let me do that, I, I forgot to share, uh, you got to share sound too when you do this, and I did not. Um, we'll try it one more time, this time with, okay, sharing sound, public comment. Okay, now we'll try the, the, the read aloud.
The Roundabout is a bad idea that has not been vetted by the public. Sent from my iPhone.
Is that her, could you hear that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Great, okay, so do we want to check in or refresh to see if there's any other comments coming in from the public?
I do not see anybody with their hands up, and I do not see any additional emails on this item.
I'm just going to give it one more minute. Unfortunately, I know better to Google any jokes. Hopefully, I learned my lesson last time, because it just comes up as the same one.
Just don't repeat them, yeah.
I'm glad I have this career instead of a comedian.
Yeah. Yeah, we're sit-down comedians.
That's actually pretty funny, that's pretty funny.
I don't see any additional emails on this item.
Okay. All right, let's bring this back to council for further deliberation and, um, a recommendation for our staff here. Any, um, Councilmember Bertrand, you had some comments to make.
Yeah, um, so Kristen reminded me something about, um, what came up at the RTC ITAC meeting, which I attended today, and the reason why I attended, because there were several items that were of interest to Capitol, one was RTC decided to do a study to see about pedestrian walking across the, um, you know, our trestle, see, you know, how much that would cost, if it was feasible, but that's not my main point. Another thing that came up is RTC is going to be doing a demonstration project, uh, for, um, protected bike lanes, and, um, you know, Kilash was there, he, he could probably give a full review on that, so that's actually going to be out there, and we'll be able to see what it looks like and if it would fit into something on Park Avenue. And then the other thing in support of roundabouts, um, I understand what Peter Wilk is talking about, but it's been out there for a long time, I don't know if Steve's ever had a, a public meeting on it, but I've sat for over an hour at the intersection there of, of Bay and Capitol Road, excuse me, Capitol Avenue, and the traffic is horrible, especially going in and out of Gales, and then when you consider the, um, the, uh, parents picking up or the kids that are driving home, you know, from school, it, it's a horrible intersection, so Roundabout, I think, has been proven to really help for situations like this. And then also, I've talked to, um, the owner and some of the people that work at Grady's, and they're constantly telling me about near accidents and people crossing the pedestrian walkways, um, I think I shared something with, um, Jamie about that, no, he shared something with me about it, that, those intersections are very hard for pedestrians, and then the cars moving around, um, I don't know how many accidents have actually occurred there, but it is something we, we should address, because it's a known problems, problem intersection. Those are my comments.
Okay, any other comments from council? Councilmember Kaiser.
Thanks, um, I had, I guess, actually, I should have asked this question. Um, the newsletter, I know we did receive, um, in an email, um, is that going to be like an electronic newsletter, or is it, um, in the mail? Sorry.
That would have actually been a good, good item for me to mention during staff comments at the beginning. So the city, city has historically done a newsletter called Capitol Current, and we usually produce it twice a year, and it gets mailed to every resident in town, and I think each edition is like around five grand, you know, by mailing that many different individual copies, and it's a fair amount of staff work, putting together these sort of large printed newsletters. Uh, our city clerk has taken the initiative to help develop an e-newsletter that we're calling Capitol Waves, and there are some great jokes, and the intent behind that is to be far more frequent, we, we'd be distributing it every two weeks after council meetings and summarize what happened at a recent council meeting, and then we take just sort of little snippets for what's going on in each department. It's going to be a lower quality production, we're not going to do as much editing on it, um, we're hoping we can just get them out every two weeks, and then, so that's what we're talking about. There's really no new costs associated with the digital one, Capitol, but then the five thousand dollars we would look into maybe having a third newsletter in the year, or, um, our city clerk has so many ideas about public engagement that she may come up with a better idea about how to, how to utilize more funds for public engagement.
Yeah, which I, I think my, I guess my comment on that would be less things in the mail, like the actual mail, I, I mean, me personally, like receiving stuff in the mail that just is like to current resident or wherever, isn't something that I necessarily would like hang on to, but, um, I, I think, and Chloe's already like ventured on to doing more for like the website and the social media side of things, and I think if that's the route we're going on, that's kind of a better, uh, a better standpoint to take than like a paper newsletter or something, that, just me personally, I mean, I don't know if that's how other people feel, but...
I, I, I just want to respond really quickly, I, I actually would have the same reaction as well, I do know that when we've been do, we've done community surveys, where we'll survey, you know, several hundred community resident, residents about different things about the city, uh, and Steve, you've been here and you see many of our community survey results, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I always remember that the, when we ask people, how do you get information about the city, it is a very high number of people that say the city newsletter, it, it always surprises me, um, and I'm sure that's changing over time, you know?
Right, like how current was that, would you say?
Our last survey, I think we did, oh, we did it before, um, last election, right? When we were looking into the UUT.
Okay, cool. I, I mean, that's good to know, and I'm just, this is just me coming from like my demographic, um, and, but I'm glad to hear that, that's happening, that's super cool. Uh, my last comment would be about the Roundabout, um, I know I've kind of talked to Jamie about it, but I also have like a ton of reserves around it, and, um, aesthetics and pedestrian access through Roundabout, um, concern me, and so I'm not like super hundred percent behind that, uh, getting that project on the way. But those are my comments, thank you.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, I just wanted to take a quick moment to address the concerns about the Roundabout. Um, I'm been on, I've been the city's representative to AMBAG, the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments, um, since I was elected in twenty sixteen, and one of the, um, the things that, that AMBAG does is a project list, a regional transportation plan project list, and the draft twenty forty-five Regional Transportation Plan Financially Constrained Project List, um, includes Bay Avenue traffic calming and bike and pedestrian enhancements, which include buffered pedestrian facilities and bicycle treatments, uh, such as those painted bike lanes, um, bike boxes, bike signals, uh, to address speed inconsistency. bike lanes, bike boxes, bike signals, to address speed inconsistency between bicyclists and vehicles. And then, it also does include multi, multimodal improvements to an intersection, including a roundabout at Bay Avenue and Capitola Avenue. Those projects are both partially constrained and partially unconstrained, which in this case just means partially funded. We have identified funding and partially unidentified funding. But I do just want to point that out, that it's part of our regional transportation plan to make these kind of improvements to the Bay Avenue intersection, and really Bay Avenue from Highway 1 all the way to Monterey. And I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that before we kind of break ground on anything like this, it would have to come back to Council again, and that the council meeting itself would serve as a public kind of community workshop or something of that sort for this project. Is that correct?
Councilmember Peterson, yeah, I think we anticipate actually holding several public workshops on the roundabout, show how it would work, how they work in other jurisdictions. That would probably be one of the first phases we would undertake as we move forward with this project. We talked about doing it in the past, but the project was so far out in the future, we didn't think that would be as productive. So we've been waiting, and that would be something we would do. So we would have some workshops and then come back to Council with the results of those workshops.
Perfect, thank you. I just wanted to address the concerns about there not being any opportunity for community feedback, because that's definitely important. So, thank you. And other than that, I would say I'm prepared to make a motion to accept the staff recommendations as it pertains to, if we could go back to that slide, but essentially as it pertains to the capital improvement project, the fund balance usage, and what was the other one? The early childhood and youth program funding. My motion would be to accept, yeah, the staff recommendations there.
And I see we have a first, and Councilmember Kaiser, before we move on to you, do I have a second for the motion that's on the table?
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. Councilmember Kaiser?
Yeah, I want to agree as well, and then just say that, yeah, I think some public information and input-output would be great on the roundabout, just because I feel like I don't know enough about it, and I was surprised to see it as a project, so, and just from not having any background. So I think that would be good, kind of like the art project, the stair project. I think it'd be a good thing to try and get out there and get more visibility for the public would be great. But yeah, I'm down with the budget as well. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Bertrand?
One last comment on roundabouts. So I'm a little skeptical at first, but let's see, I think the closest roundabouts here are in Marina, near the, what is it, the, it's one of the, it's near the library in Marina. So there's two roundabouts that, one comes off, go off the highway, you hit another roundabout when you're going to the library. So those are the closest, you can see what they're like if you...
Well, there's one at the boardwalk.
Yeah, there's two in Santa Cruz.
And Depot Park.
Okay, yeah. Well, these are pretty big, the boardwalk is like so many people, it's like crazy. Yeah, so you're right about that, yeah. Okay, so those are two that, you know, seem to work well. And I think Steve has some designs already. It's not a circle, it's sort of a lopsided circle.
We have options for a non-circle event, and then we do have one for a circle too. And, you know, I will say, as far as pedestrian crossings, the crossings now are, especially along across Bay Avenue, are very long crossings and take a long time, and that's very hard for pedestrians, because motorists are notoriously impatient. And with the roundabout, the crossings will be one lane at a time, and with protected pockets in the middle, so they will be much shorter and much safer for pedestrians. And as far as bike safety, I think studies have shown that bikes are very comfortable going around and around, going through a roundabout with the vehicles, because there's such low speeds in those intersections. So, you know, we'll move that forward, but that's the information I know, that they actually improve bike and pedestrian safety.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I just, I'm a noob when it comes to roundabouts, so definitely need more information, so all is appreciated. Thanks, guys.
All right, so before we move on to a vote, I just wanted to add a couple comments, because I want to talk about the roundabout too. Have a chance. Real quick, so I'm not sure that I am on board with this vision quite yet, but I appreciate that there's process and procedures to moving on with such projects. I just want to be sure in what we're approving in terms of the allocation, I don't know if there was, on the, it was at the next slide, what was it, what did it say?
Next one.
$200,000 for what exactly? Or what was it? I can't remember. Bay Avenue, Capitola Avenue, roundabout. So, you know, what I would just say, and if it's just for optics, you know, this is something maybe that we're saying is a, this funding will begin the process of, as Steve said, of community input, and will be utilized for those steps in place. I feel like, so we're not superseding process and procedure. So I don't know if that's, if by us just saying that, if that's the takeaway, or should we be more clear about where these dollars are going to? I know it's a million-dollar project, and more than likely, this would just be used for those first steps, but I just, I'm wondering if it's better for our community to see, like, this is us just exploring this as an option for our community. I don't know what Council thinks about that. There's already a motion and a second, but I'm just wondering if anyone would be open to being a little bit more, and if staff has any recommendations as well on how we could offer some more clarity behind what this is for.
Mayor Brooks, if I may?
Please.
Yeah, I'm very comfortable and agree with your concerns there, and I think we could change the name of that allocation to the Bay Avenue Roundabout Preliminary Design and Public Workshop, so that we're very clear that that's all we're going to proceed with at this time. I don't envision spending all that money on that effort, so from that standpoint, it's the beginning of a fun bank for the larger project, but adding that we're only going to complete preliminary design and public workshops that are public input at this point, I think is completely appropriate. Thank you.
Okay, so I know we have a first and a second. If Councilmember Peterson would be agreeable to that amendment, just for that language update, I'd like your input, if that would be okay.
You're just looking for an amendment to, essentially, for that part of the recommendation to say Bay Avenue, Cap Avenue, roundabout, preliminary design and community outreach? Just to add three words? That's fine with me.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a first and a second with that amendment. Chloe, are you comfortable with the motion? Is that clear?
Yes, I have that here in the minutes, that that allocation will include wording preliminary design and community outreach for the roundabout.
Okay. So we have a recommendation to move forward with that amendment and that language, and the recommendations seen on the screen, which are, I'm not going to read them all, I think we've got it. So can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bertrand.
I agree.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Aye.
Councilmember Peterson.
Aye.
Mayor Brooks.
Aye. All right, this item passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. That was the fastest meeting ever. Steve?
Aye, Jamie has it.
I do have, we do have one other little cleanup item, so...
Oh, am I not done?
I'm sorry, it was just the last bullet there. With that direction, I'm assuming that this means that you're prepared for us to come back with the documents for final budget adoption, and that we will cancel the upcoming budget hearings?
I think that's what the vote, yes, I'm seeing that across the board. I think Council's agreeable.
Great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we were all clear.
All right. All clear. All right, everyone, thank you so much. Great to see all of your faces. Great work tonight.
Bye.
I'll see you all soon. Good night.
Goodbye.